Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. My name is Elizabeth Paul and I serve as manager of public policy for the Birmingham Business Alliance. Just wanted to go through a few housekeeping items as we get started with our governmental affairs committee meeting today. If you have any questions for Commissioner Ammons following his briefing, please use the chat function to send in your questions and our Chair of the GAC Kelvin Datcher will moderate that portion. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the BBA's website. And now I just want to kind of walk us through the BBA's legislative agenda process for any of our GAC members who are on the call today. So the BBA's Governmental Affairs Committee is currently working on drafting the 2021 state and federal legislative agendas. And I just wanted to take this time to remind any of our committee members to please submit any new items or any changes that they have by Monday, September 7th is the deadline that we've set. Our next GAC meeting is Monday, September 21st. And the September meeting, we will only have our governmental affairs committee members at that meeting. We'll return to the larger expanded group for the October and November meetings. I'll be out on leave starting later this month. So you'll be in Kelvin Datcher's hands and he will help walk y'all through this process. Thank you Kelvin for all of your help on this. So if you do have new items you want to submit, please utilize the new email address that we've set up. It's GAC@BirminghamBusinessAlliance.com. And as always, you can reach out to me if you have any questions. So with that, I will turn it over to our Chair of the Governmental Affairs Committee Kelvin Datcher to start us off and introduce our guest speaker.
Hi Elizabeth, how are you?
Oops, I'm muted. Hey Kelvin, I'm good. How are you?
Good. Great to have you all here. Everybody's adjusting to the new realities of our world. I'm actually home right now. Come here guys. I'm having to play principal and I don't know if you guys can see him, principal and classroom teacher. Virtual school with my kids, so there's a lot going on and so it's an exciting time. Kind of adjusting and you know, and you know, shout out to all the teachers and educators out there because I think we really value them a lot more. Now having to serve under their serve kind of as an assistant teacher and everyone else to do what they do. But today's exciting for us because we have a great partner to my work at the city of Birmingham. Commissioner Steve Adams has hit the ground running as a member of the Jefferson County Commission managing economic development. I guess really leading that charge. He's been a great partner with us. There've been a lot of just innovative things that have happened between the county and the city over the last several years and we're very grateful for his partnership. Commissioner Ammons is a US Navy veteran, so he's a veteran public servant even before becoming a two-term member of the Vestavia City Council. He's just an all-around good guy and he has to put up with Othel over there, his assistant. His assistant, so we have to give him lots and lots of kudos for that as well. But he's a dad with I think with four kids of his own and Commissioner Adams Ammons, great for setting aside time for us today and welcome to the BBAGAC.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate that and I appreciate being with you guys today. I do have four kids and only have one left in at in home and looking forward to the launch date next year. My wife isn't, but but I guess I am. It's always good to get a get a couple off the payroll and send them off to live by themselves. But I appreciate it and Elizabeth, best of luck to you. And I know everything's gonna gonna be fine and I know the sidewalks are gonna be great to walk the the new baby on.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Kelvin, I appreciate that. You know, I have enjoyed what such a great partnership with the city of Birmingham, with you and with Josh and the mayor. And it's been it's been something that I think has helped helped us with economic development and will will continue to down the road. And we're living in unprecedented times, so we're having to figure out how to do it a little differently. And wanted to talk a little bit about that today. That first, for those of you that don't know me, I I am, as one of our our staff members of the county calls me, the new guy. And that's that's okay. I can be the new guy. But not new enough that I don't know my way around municipal politics and municipal economic development as well. I do serve as the Commissioner for District 5, which if you can see on the picture is the bottom right-hand side has five in the middle of it and it basically goes from the Bestinmer Cut Off all the way out to Leeds. So I have a good section. It's a smaller district, but that just means that I have a more dense population since they're all separated by population. I do chair Economic Development and I'm also responsible for IT, which can be a double-edged sword because as things change, our our IT demands change. And then I am extremely grateful to have the opportunity to serve on the BBA Executive Committee. And I was lucky enough to be asked to be on the selection committee and do all the interviews with the our now new CEO, which is a fantastic choice and I'm really looking forward to working together with him even more. Since we've kind of the timeline for COVID, everybody knows it, you know, from the time that WHO declared as a pandemic to where the president said there was a state of emergency. And when Jefferson County declared it as a state of emergency, we all went into lockdown at that point. I remember very distinctly, my son came home from Troy on for spring break and he never left until last week. And that set us in on a path of having to think, how do we, how do we better deal with downturns? I mean, you're shutting an entire economy down. How can we, how can we plan for it? And we had a little time to plan, but still very little, very little answers other than the city and the county shows that our focus needed to be on on our our local businesses and our our current businesses. We needed to do a little bit more working on retention, which the BBA does great with Mark Brown. And wanted to make sure that that we answered citizens' needs. And so through that time, we we there's a moratorium on on economic development projects. Our focus needed to be on our citizens. So we did that. So we would pick it back up June 1st. And we had a couple, a couple of projects working at that time. But nothing, nothing that was going to be imminent. So to move on, as we kind of moved through it, we we got to where CARES Act was on the on Congress's agenda. And we knew what what initially came out of of the CARES Act or what was coming out. And here's what we had to deal with. We had outstanding unemployment rate at 3.7 before this this all kicked off. In July, it was 8.5% and in the state, and that's in Jefferson County, and in Alabama, it was 9.9. That's, you know, it's better than what it was back in April, but still 9.9 is pretty, pretty significant. So with with unemployment claims as they as they rose and came down and they still continue to come down, we still have issues with a workforce, a workforce that was initially in service or in food service or any number of other business that now that business is no longer there. And how do we, how do we retrain that workforce to make them available for other things? And we're currently looking at that through some of our CARES Act funding. So for for those of you that aren't maybe as familiar, we had a number of folks calling us, calling me specifically saying, hey, I need some of that money. Well, you know, we, the county was lucky enough to to get some of the, some of the CARES Act money specifically. And that's because we had a population of over 500,000. And so we got a direct payment. We were the only one in the state of Alabama that got that. And of course, the state got their own. And they're distributing theirs appropriately. You've seen some press releases from the governor what they're, what they've been able to do here recently. And what Jefferson County has done, and this had every opportunity to go the wrong way. You know, you give a bunch of politicians a lot of money, they're gonna make a mistake, I'm sure. And so what we decided to do was to have everything run through our county manager's office. It was to take politics out of it, so there wasn't any leaning one way or the other. And Justin Smith is the guy that's handling it for for the county. I think he's on the call today, so if there are any specific questions, we can bring him in to answer those as well. And what they're doing is they're notifying us when they have something in in the hopper to be approved. But we also took another step. We said, that's not enough for to to rely just on our staff and their interpretations of the CARES Act and the and Treasury's interpretations that we needed to have somebody that had an expertise. And through the Association of County Commissions nationwide, there was a presentation done by Whit O'Brien. And Whit O'Brien has a has a is our consultant now that has a specialty in understanding the the federal government guidelines from FEMA, from OIG, from the IRS to help us decide what is a valid use of this money. So there are very specific things that are that are required. This money has to be directly related to COVID response. So it's a public, public health, but also it cannot be something that is already in your current budget. And so that money has to be, and those expenses has to be incurred from from March 1st and until December 30th. So we have a short window of time to spend this money. And it also has to fit in the the very narrow guidelines, which kind of like PPP and EIDL, the requirements always change. And same thing is true with Treasury. They find something that's not right and they need to make an amendment, they they add that to it. So it was very specific in that guideline that we could not use that to use for shortfalls in municipal budgets. So there were a number of other things that we couldn't do to make sure that we we stood some some folks up. What we did do is there were very specific things that we needed to help our municipalities in the county with that that included helping them with PPP, making sure that their firefighters and first responders had the equipment that they needed to to do the job that they needed to. Also with our sheriff's office, our fire districts and EMA. And one of the other things that I'm proud of that we've done with this money is worked with UAB on on how do we help our nursing homes and our seniors? Understanding that a vast majority of our cases held were in those nursing homes. And so we created some sites where somebody tested positive in nursing home. They got moved to a single facility that had a section of the facility that would be very specific to COVID care. So working with them, we're extending ourselves and providing better, better service to our to our citizens. Cooper Green and the Jefferson County Department of Health, making sure that we got more and more testing done. I think out of all the counties in the state, we test, oh gosh, I want to say it's like 60 to 70% more than some of the other other counties. So we're doing the best job that we can for for our citizens. But I don't want it to be all about doom and gloom. And but but support, because when we came back and after June 1st, we've had a number of projects that we've not only supported, but but come up with. And FedEx is one of them that came out recently, which is a multi-jurisdictional agreement between City Bestinmer, City of Birmingham and Jefferson County that we're able to to extend everything that we have to be able to make sure that we are going to be not only known for bio and life sciences and automotive, but we also become a distribution hub for for this part of of the southeast. And we're going to be seeing more and more of that coming down the road. Recently, a UAB, it's not a UAB project, but it's associated with UAB and student housing. That was a great get for for Birmingham and Jefferson County because as UAB continues to grow and we try to help them meet their 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 numbers of students that they're trying to to get to. This was also a brownfield that wasn't producing anything for us. And now it's not only going to be a beautiful building that will provide services for the community, but for the student population at UAB. That's one of the big ways that's going to help us move forward. And one of the things that I'm most excited about is the 2025 World Police and Fire Games, which we were supposed to go to Rotterdam in the Netherlands to do do the presentation to the to the World Police and Fire Games Committee. It ended up that they ended up coming to us because of COVID and they shut everything down in in Amsterdam and Rotterdam. And so they came here and some of them joined us by Zoom and we made the presentation, which is is a huge get for us. DJ McAveitts, who was formerly with the World Games, is is going to lead that for us. And on on the heels of the World Games, we're going to be able to do the Police and Fire Games. And they will bring, I think, twice as many, not only competitors, but their families will come and and other folks will come to participate. We have an opportunity to show the world two times over in in 2022 and 2025 that Birmingham is a place to is not only a great community and a great place to to work, live and play, but it's a great place to do business. And the the number of other projects beyond this that we have in the pipeline are are quite impressive. I think at the last, the number of active projects we had were in the 60s. And I'm looking very much forward to closing some of these before the end of the year. And you will definitely see some here in the next two to three months. And I'm excited. I'm excited about that. One of the, one of the biggest things that I think we can do moving forward from an economic development standpoint is things that we were already doing. And talking a little bit to Don Smith earlier and the leadership that Fred McCallum played and the BBA staff in how we brought our regional economic development allies together and how now we're working in different areas to improve through the strategic plan as we continue the strategic plan. How we continue to work together. You know, the mayors did it with their no poaching agreement, the the good neighbor pledge. How can we extend that and work with with our neighboring counties and continue to work with our municipalities within Jefferson County? How can we work to be together? And so many, many times I've asked the question of of our during our CEO search, you know, what what's your COVID pivot? Where you are now and what, how would you do that when you, when you come come to Birmingham? And there were different answers a lot of times. And the biggest one that I took away was that we have to be flexible. We have to be more flexible than we have in the past. And we have to be a little bit more aggressive, which I think we were, we were planning, planning to do and not just sit back and wait for projects to come to us. But we have to be very, very decisive on how we go after projects. So maybe that's, maybe that'll be the theme for 2020 is what's your COVID pivot? For each individual business, how do you stay afloat? How do you, how do you change your model? Because we're still working heavily on, you know, reshoring. How can we reshore things from overseas that need to be here? What does that make it look like from a technology standpoint? And how can we make it more advances and more people working remotely? How can we bring those folks that are that are technology and working remotely anyway? How can we bring them to a better quality of life here in Birmingham? That, you know, we have the, you know, the, our salaries are higher than than our level of income. I'm sorry, that sounded wrong. Our salaries are higher based on our our quality of life. And I think, I think in the end, the Regional Economic Development Allies, BBA and the strategic plan that that we're still continuing to build on and will will follow. I think we're doing the right things that will help us advance in the future. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to, happy to answer. I understood my, did my my screen freeze?
No. Okay. I think you're good. Commissioner, what's been kind of the the biggest thing I think you may have learned or seen since you've become a commissioner? In terms of your previous experience at the at the municipal level, now moving to the county level, is what's been the kind of the biggest surprise or maybe the biggest lesson learned for you thus far?
Wow. Was it's definitely not the it's, it's coming from what I always called in Vestavia, politics is we almost live in a bubble. You know, and I'd say almost that for for over the mountain. We live in a bubble. Which is not a bad thing and it's not a good thing. It's just a thing. And politics weren't as prevalent there. We 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 tend to talk things out and and so sometimes, sometimes it's difficult because more things are about politics. The numbers don't bother me. You know, it's a bigger budget. That doesn't bother me. Those are the things that I get, but it's thinking, thinking outside the proverbial box when it comes to things that we've, we've all dealt with here recently. It's, you know, it's race, it's it's disparities. And after having gone through Leadership Birmingham this year, it opens your eyes up even more that there are certain things that that we need to, that we need to tackle that maybe I didn't see before that we really need to work on now.
Sorry about that. I accidentally muted myself again. And please apologize. Let me apologize upfront. If I ask a question that you may have covered, two of my, two of my kids links were broken to them, so I had to go and fix it. Serving as kind of principal headmaster and all that same time. Can you talk a little bit about Grant Smith Road and the corridor study?
Yeah, so there's, there's two different studies. One goes from grants, I'm sorry, from Old Leeds Road to 459 and the other one is 459 to, I guess, Lake Purdy. And I don't have any updates on on the the one from to Lake Purdy, from 459 to Lake Purdy. But the current one is supposed to be going out to bid and should be a widening up up to 459. And is is a great, I could probably get you more information on that. I had some and I got it last month and I'm totally blanking on the on the specifics right now.
Yes, sir. Talk to me about if you
Anybody that wants, you can send me an email and I can send you an updated on the map and the timeline.
We'll make sure everyone has that, your email, Ms. Commissioner. Can you talk a little bit about, here's a question that was submitted, your plans and priorities around retaining and growing minority-owned businesses?
We need to work, we need to work with everybody. We're currently working on with one group here within the Fairfield and Birmingham areas to help help develop more opportunity. So it's how we can use, what we're blessed in having is our Economic Development Fund, is how can we help take care of some of the food deserts? And provide more opportunity. How can we, how can we provide more opportunities for not the education, but workforce development? So we get them in better, better opportunities. One of the things that that we we work on and is one of our incentives is to make sure that we have a higher quality job available at a higher quality, an above average wage. So we're not, we're not, we don't settle for $15 an hour jobs. In some instances, we don't settle for $20 an hour jobs. It needs to be above that so that we're getting folks trained to have a higher age, higher wage job. And so some of the work that we've done with the with our Dr. Hamilton in our Workforce Development Program, the AIDT from the state, how can we help provide better, better training? And like I said at the beginning, we're, we're, we have a whole new workforce now because a lot of those jobs and all of those businesses have gone away. We need to make sure we get folks retrained for for today's workforce. And that's one of our pivots, you know, training and education.
Couple more questions that have that are coming in. You're pretty popular here, Commissioner. These kind of are connected. What do you see as kind of the largest impediment to growth in Jefferson County? And then also, you all have done a really good job. It's universally kind of recognized in terms of building bridges from the county level down to municipal level. Can you talk a little bit how about how y'all have done that in terms of connecting from the county level down to municipalities? And then again, the largest single impediment to growth in the county?
The the largest impediment is 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 how people view us, how people from from outside of Alabama view Birmingham and Jefferson County. When when they, when you, when you talk about it, they see 1960s. They don't think about us now. How have we moved forward? A history is a big part of who we are and and we should never forget that. But how do we, how do we move forward? So we always talk about if we can bring folks here, they can see Birmingham, they can experience Birmingham and Jefferson County. They see the beauty, they see the quality of life, the quality of place. We have an opportunity to keep them here because they all have misconceptions about what, what, what and who we are. And I think one of the great, one of the great ones about that is is Brittany Somerville with Birmingham Bound. When she brings folks in, they totally have misconceptions. When site selectors come in, now we have some of our site selectors thinking about us differently, saying, hey, this project may not come and you may not win on this project, but I'm bringing more back because I know what you have. So redefining ourselves, redeveloping ourselves, and I think one of the things that we'll see down the line is is a new brand, a new brand for for us. You know, what is economic development for for our seven-county region? And we need to take that brand and we need to, we need to sell it. As far as municipal cooperation, I I've always been a big believer in municipal, even in Vestavia. If it was, if it was building a road or repaving a road, you know, it's so much easier if you can get multiple municipalities to agree that, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna all, we're gonna hire one contractor. And instead of them stopping at the municipal boundary, they just haven't paved the whole thing. Well, how much more money are you saving because you activate a piece of equipment once? And how much savings can you have? That's, that's a small example of of building, how do you, how do you take that and build relationships? I think the Mayor's Association is doing a great job of that now. And and we've also worked along the lines of developing that with our, with our city councillors. Casey Middlebrooks, who's a council member in Hoover, Casey Middlebrooks, who's a council member in Hoover. Pulled the group together and asked me to be a part of it, that was our, we called it the council roundtable. Well, now councillor, council members come from all over, I think this is about a year and a half that we've been. Meeting and somebody would always, you know, host lunch. And, you know, it came to mind that, you know, the mayor's association does a great job and they have. Somebody that, that brings them together as an executive director. Why wouldn't this work for council members as well? If they're able to share ideas, it shouldn't be just left to the mayors that you can share good ideas with, between council members as well. And, and also when I first came on, which by the way, I'm, I'm doing a, a grant to the community foundation to help facilitate that. And to bring that, that cooperation together. They did a great job with the mayor's association and, and the no poaching pledge. I'm sure that they can do that as well here. And also when I started on the commission. I decided I wanted to go and meet with as many, as many of the mayors as I possibly could. To talk to them about where they were and where they currently were with economic development and how we could be helpful. And so we went and sat down with them and it's almost time for round two. To go back and check in with them to see how we can help and, and like unfortunately with Fairfield. You know, they had to claim bankruptcy and we knew that was, you know, probably coming. But, but we're working with them and I have a relationship with the mayor now that I know. I can reach out to him and he can reach out to me and we can work together along with the commissioner from that district to, to help benefit them.
Another question from the field here, are there any economic development tools that we don't have in our toolbox that you think we would or should have? Or that you'd like to have?
I think, I think there's probably. I think that's to be determined. I think that BBA and its transition and the strategic plan. I think there's a lot that we need to continue to build on. There, there are groups now working and I'm chairing a group that's working on the brand. What, what does that brand look like? I think that's one of the tools in the toolbox. When I went, I went to the Paris Air Show last year. And it was easy to see how Mobile had their identity. And Huntsville and North Alabama had their identity and they were all working towards. They're working together towards, you know, creating, creating the best impact they had for them and the most exposure. We didn't have anything. We had the county, we had. BBA was there, but we didn't have anybody from the city. Kelvin, I'm going to recommend you go next time though.
Absolutely, I appreciate that.
But, you know, we, we needed that identity, we needed that brand that, that, that we could work with. And one of the, one of the biggest brands that we see in economic development is, is Maiden Alabama. You know, with, with Department of Commerce. We want that for us, how can we sell our seven county region or even central Alabama for that matter? On, on coming here and moving here, so I think that's one tool that, that maybe we don't have, but, but we're working on it, we're building it and. And it's, and it's a long time coming, but I, I think in the end. Again, and, and I hate to be a cheerleader for BBA. But I'm, I'm going to be because I think the steps that we're taking now are really, really, really going to put us ahead of the game and for the future.
Couple more questions coming in, what can those of us on this call around the area do for you and the commission that will be helpful?
Wow, go, go spend money, go spend lots of, lots of money within Birmingham. No. You know, when you're, when you're in and around, I mean, in and around, we, we need to put a good face. Especially these times now, it's, it's a lot of negativity. And, and we need to find the positives around the negatives. You know, with, with, you know, the barons or, 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 you know, they're not, they're not playing, but. If you're downtown, you're at railroad park and it's, it's a beautiful day, take a picture and, you know, hashtag. You know, Birmingham now, I mean, those, those are, Birmingham now is a great example. And, and some of those others that, you know, putting a positive face on it. Cause we don't always want it to be that all the negative news overshadows the good news. We're doing a lot of good things here and we need folks to know about it. Spent, spreading a positive word is, is it, and, and turn away the negative. And I know that's probably a little bit more simple and, and I don't, I don't mean, I'm not going to sing around the kumbaya here in a second, but. We, we do need to, we do need to take a look at, at our, at our culture, our, our culture within the county, within the city, all of our municipalities. And, and, and turn it around, you know, let's, let's make something, something good out of it instead of bad.
A question for you, if the Alabama Jobs Act and the Grow Alabama Act are not extended before they expire. How would this affect the county in terms of its economic development efforts?
It, it affects us significantly. It affects us in our ability to offer incentives from the, from the state side. It, it would, it would be detrimental. There's only so much that we can offer in, in cash. And property tax or, or, or sales tax or occupational tax. As, as a rebate or as to abate. Without more help from the state. We don't stand a chance compared to our, our, our neighboring states. They are offering far more than what we are. And sometimes, some instances, they're offering free land. Where we can't necessarily offer that because sometimes that ends up being millions and millions of dollars. So that's, that's, um, it's, it's, it's a big issue. It's a big issue and I'm, I'm very supportive of, I, I know David, David Fleming with Rev is bringing. Let's, let's figure out how we can make this happen because it is important to all of us.
I think we have John Leiter who can, has a question, John, are you there?
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir, thank you very much. Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity to ask a question and for being with us today. I've got a question about the CARES Act money. I think the concern from the city of Hoover is the consistency and how that's being mastered across the state of Alabama. Understanding you're just responsible for Jefferson County. When you look at many of the other cities throughout Alabama, in fact, Madison received 2.4 million for public safety expenses, Florence 1.9 million, Albertville 1 million. I could go on and on. The city of Hoover has incurred 3.8 million dollars in public safety expenses that according to the state comptroller's office and the treasury office. Is reimbursable through the CARES Act funding. I know up until now, Jefferson County's made a decision that they're not going to refund that money to the city of Hoover, is that? Is there still room for some discussion there or is the county's decision final as it is today?
Well, and, and so I'm not, I'm not aware of that, we see things that are coming, but we don't know why. Do you have any, any, they should have given an explanation of why that didn't meet the criteria and it wouldn't meet the criteria of the treasury. So feel, feel free to, feel free to call me, but did you get, did you get anything, any feedback on why that was denied?
Well, it, so far I believe it's just an answer from the consultant that the county has chosen, who I believe is out from the state of California. But again, I think it's just open to the interpretation of the CARES Act itself. And it just seems to be some inconsistency and Hoover could be left holding a 3.8 million dollar void. That again, other cities throughout Alabama are getting reimbursed for, so. Just a good conversation with, I think this, between the city and the county would go a long way to be able to at least remedy that.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and you, Hoover, city of Hoover, since you straddled Jefferson and Shelby. I know a portion of that is very specific to. To the services provided in Jefferson County and that you guys were actually able to go to the, to the state as well to receive some of that. But John, let's, let's, let's talk about it, I'd like to, like to hear more and, and, and see what the specifics are and what the reasoning was.
Thank you, Steve, really appreciate it.
It's always an open door, you know, you got me.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. Oh, and you know what? We got Justin Smith on who is.
The man himself.
Yeah.
So Justin, Justin, let me just, if I can, just really, Justin is the deputy county manager. And has been a really a great partner in assisting with the county's generous support. From their COVID allocation to the municipalities. Good morning, Justin, good afternoon.
Assistant to the county manager, kind of like drives through if you're an office guy.
Assistant to the assistant, how about that?
There you go. Yeah, so the, the issue with, with the public safety payroll expenses and when we've talked to Alan Rice about that at Hoover. It goes down to, to basically what is in the guidance versus what's in some of the frequently asked questions is that, that kind of interpret the guidance. The guidance that was provided by the treasury department says that you can't use that money for anything that was already budgeted for the, for the year. The public safety expenses, the, the baseline expenses for those were already budgeted when, when the act was, was, was passed. There, there is a, a frequently asked question document that came out subsequent to that. That says, as a matter of administrative convenience. There is a presumption that public safety and public health payroll expenses. Are substantially related or dedicated to responding or mitigating to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Which is one of the requirements to use funds that were already budgeted for a purpose. The, the councilman is, is correct by saying that some of the other, other cities have received money for payroll expenses per. Some communications with the state and particularly through the Alabama League of Municipalities. However, the Association of Commissions of Alabama, as well as our consultants have both gone on the record as saying. That they would be cautious in using funds for this purpose until the underlying guidance was changed. The frequently asked questions is just an interpretive document, the underlying guidance still says you cannot use those funds. For things that were already budgeted. At the onset of the, the public health emergency and since those. Expenses were already budgeted, the only thing that we have extended those, the payroll expenses to for public safety thus far. Are things like overtime that is related to the COVID emergency. Or having to backfill positions because somebody's had to come in and fill for somebody that's quarantined. We'll be happy to revisit that at some point in the future if the guidance is potentially changed. But right now with both the state association of county commissions as well as our consultants. Both cautioning against that, even though other people were doing it. We are not keen on doing it ourselves until the underlying guidance or legislation is, is altered to back it up.
Let me, let me add to that real quick. One of the things and one of the reasons why we, we hired Widow Brian was that. OIG, Officer Inspector General. Will have oversight and will have auditors that will come through. And if the, if the items that they have, that we approve, if they are not. Actually usable, then we're on the, on the hook for it, same thing with the state, we're, we're accountable. And that's why we're so specific on making sure that we have the documentation and everything associated with it and. OIG also. Hiring a, a, a bunch more auditors to make sure that they held all of us accountable. So that's, that's one of the other scary thoughts about. You know, distributing this kind of money.
Thanks, everyone, Justin, we appreciate you chiming in there. Yeah, I know you've been hip deep in this and, and from my, you worked and supported us directly, so I do appreciate it as well. Commissioner, you have a unique position again, working at the county level. You work with both municipalities and then the state. What's kind of, how's that, what's that been like kind of having to move between kind of the, kind of the, the local level? Then rising to the state level and working with the Department of Commerce, Mr. Can't, Secretary Canfield and those kind of folks? And making sure that, because Birmingham has not always, the greater Birmingham area has not always been. A feature selling point for the state of Alabama. I think you've played a great role in kind of reshaping us as a priority. What's, how's that happened and kind of, how, how did you get that done?
I think, I think it's all about relationships when you, when you get down to it. Anybody that's ever done any kind of sales understands that. Your relationships are important and you have to build on them. I had the great fortune of knowing Greg before going back to when his daughter was in gymnastics. And my wife was, at the time was his daughter's gymnastics coach. So I've known, I've known him for a really, really long time. And, you know, his time on the Vestavia City Council was, was big. And then when I was on the council, he was in the state legislature, so. We always worked together on, you know, trying to find common, common needs. And when we moved to our former government with the council manager, former government required legislation. We needed him to be a part of that and, and helping us move forward and, and creating a better governmental experience. So I think, I think history and the relationships, knowing, like I'm a big believer in. And in the book I always tell everybody to read is. By Stephen Covey, it's called The Speed of Trust, The One Thing That Changes Everything. And if you know you can trust somebody, they're competent, they have capacity. Then, then the speed at which business is done goes much, much faster. And I think that's, I think that's what we have with commerce. We continue to try to build on it and. Again, here I am with BBA cheerleader. With, with the staff at BBA and with Kenny now as the CEO and with Fred as the interim. I think that's continuing to build us up to be, to do great things here in the near future.
Well, Commissioner, I really appreciate you spending some time with us this, this morning slash afternoon and, and. You know, someone from the city of Birmingham, I, I appreciate your partnership directly. You've been great and I know Josh Carpenter bugs you all the time. I'm sorry, just got to put up with it for.
I'm bugging him, I'm bugging him quite a lot.
And again, you, you have to deal with Othel over there, so he was really a great guy and has always been a great partner for the city as well, so. On behalf of our, the GAC, thanks a lot for being with us today.
Thanks for having me, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. And Elizabeth, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you Kelvin and thank you so much Kelvin, as always, for your leadership and service with our governmental affairs committee, we really appreciate it. Especially moving forward since I will be out for the next few months. And Commissioner Ammons, thank you for your leadership with the county and all of your service and work with the BBA as a great partner. And a valuable member of our executive committee. We appreciate it and we're so grateful that you were able to be with us today, so thank you.
Thanks.
I'd also like to thank all of our investors for participating. If any of our investors have more questions about the governmental affairs committee. And are interested in engaging more in that process, please feel free to reach out to me. And to our GAC members, thank you as always for all of your work and your membership. And with that, we will wrap things up until our next GAC meeting in September. Thank you, everyone, we greatly appreciate it.
Bye bye, thanks.
Thank you.